Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council and a special meeting of the Madera City Council as the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Today is Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. City Clerk Gonzalez.
The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing (669) 900-6833, enter ID (885) 5276-8137. Press *9 to raise your hand to comment and *6 to unmute yourself to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Sports Street, Madera, California 93637. We'd also like to remind the public that Wordly is available for translation services.
Thank you for that. Roll call, please. Here.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Zachariah.
Here.
Councilmember Montez.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Vegas.
Here.
Thank you and welcome all. We're all here tonight. Great to see all of my colleagues' faces here. Our invocation tonight will be done by Joyce Pastor Lane and Aperture Allegiance will be with our Mayor Protem Rodriguez. If everybody could please stand.
Good evening to all our mayor, citizens of Madera City, California. It's good to be back. This is the day that we have made, you have made, Father, and we rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we thank you for you have entrusted much to all of us in our prayer and petition, city, the councils, all of the members, all of the citizens. We pray, oh God, that you would continue to bring the unity of spirit and the unity of love to all of us. We thank you that we would be mindful for the benefit of your people, recognizing you in all that we do. May we always draw from the wisdom of God and through our faith look to God for our daily provisions. In Jesus' name. Lord, let us become all of that that you say that we are, and we're more than conquerors, no matter what the challenge may be, but we're more than conquerors because the Lord assists us all. And all of the people did say yes and amen to the will of God. Yes and amen. Amen. Hallelujah. God bless.
Ready, standing?
Is ready? Let's salute the flag. Ready? Salute.
Thank you Pastor Lane and Mayor Protem Rodriguez. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I bring it back to my colleagues for any comments or concerns. If not, I will ask for a motion.
Want to approve the agenda?
I second.
I am motioned and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. There are no presentations. And City Clerk Gonzalez.
Onto public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but not are but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time.
Thank you for that. If anybody would like to comment, I open up comment at this time, please come over to the podium and make a line. I see we have one comment in the chamber. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Michaela Contreras. I am a resident of District 3. My husband and three children, and I have lived here for over 11 years. We have also lived in District 4 and 6. And in all my time living in Madera, I have seen a great need for community resources. One of the most pressing issues is the lack of safe places for young children and their families to cool off during the hot summer months. A splash pad will serve as a cool zone for families during extreme heat waves, which are becoming more frequent and providing a safe alternative to pools and natural bodies of water such as rivers, lakes, and canals. There's a great concern about not having a safe alternative to natural bodies of water and pools. I hope you can understand that this splash pad project is not just about money, it's about safety. Although we have spoken about the safety benefits of a splash pad, many times the main concern, the main concerns that have been brought up to seem to be centered around the costs. Why is this project being viewed through a financial lens when when the well-being of our community is at risk? I believe this project is about safety, not just money. The cost of preventing accidents in our community far outweighs all the money this project could cost. It's not just about the dollars we should be looking at, but rather how the community is going to be positively impacted by this project. We need to think about how we can all provide the best level of services for our community. A splash pad would provide a safe, accessible, and much-needed resource for our community's children and families. Unlike pools or other bodies of water, a splash pad offers a contained and visible environment where supervision is easier and the depth of the water is never a factor. A significant number of children, particularly in low-income households, lack basic swimming skills. Statistics show that the majority of African-American, Hispanic, Latino children have few to no swimming skills, which puts them at a higher risk of drowning. Unfortunately, drowning is the leading cause of unintentional injury-related deaths for children ages 1 through 4 in California and the United States. For older children and teenagers ages 5 through 17, natural bodies of water like rivers, lakes, and canals are where a higher percentage of drowning occurs. This is often due to the unpredictable nature of their environments, including strong currents, underwater objects, and cold temperatures. Madera desperately needs a safer place for more accessible water recreation options. I hope you will consider this project and begin to weigh the clear benefits of our community against the financial cost. Thank you for your consideration and support.
You for your comment?
Hello. My name is Bill Hoffrich. I've been a tenant at the airport for many years and a presence there since 1970. I have a lot of concerns with it. One compliment I'd like to give though is public work has stepped up and has really cleaned it up in the last few weeks since the last person was there, caretaker of it. I appreciate that. And in conversations about that, I found out that with the casino, they're going to put a roundabout on Golden State in 17. And I don't think that's a real good idea because all the heavy truck traffic goes in and out of there to the industrial, the almond processors, and also future development to the west. They're talking 10,000 homes possibly. That'd be 30,000 cars nowadays. It'd be a real chore to get to the freeway. So I'd just like that to be considered. I don't think it's a good idea, and probably that island that was put out there on 17 will have to be removed. I don't know why it was put in in the first place, but anyway, it's there. So just some considerations on that is why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Hoffrich. I see no other comments in the chamber, any online or on Zoom. City Clerk Gonzalez.
Mayor, we did receive one written public comment. It was in regard to the Madera's flash pad from Tina Hernandez. A copy has been provided to council. There's also a copy at the podium for those wishing wishing to obtain a copy.
Thank you for that. At this time, I close public comment, and we will move on to the next item.
I don't hear. There's, I'm sorry, there's nothing under public hearings, and we will move on to consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately.
Thank you for that. I bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns. If not, I open it up for public comment. I see none in the chamber. Anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. I close public comment on this time and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion and a second.
Make a motion for the consent call.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Next item, City Clerk.
We have no items under workshop. Moving on to Section D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item D1 is designation of a voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities 2025 Annual Conference.
Thank you, and City Clerk Gonzalez will be presenting D1 to us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Alicia Gonzalez, City Clerk. Tonight, I bring before you item D1, which is designation of a voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. The League of California Cities Annual Conference this year is in October 8th through 10th at the Long Beach Convention Center. There will be general sessions, workshops, networking events, and the business meeting October 10th. Each city is allowed one delegate to vote on resolutions affecting CalCity policies. At this time, all council members are registered to attend with the except with the exception of Mayor Geigos, who will not be attending this year's conference. Action tonight required by council is consistent with CalCity bylaws. The council must designate one voting delegate and up to two alternates to participate in voting if the delegate is unable to serve. Completion of the voting delegate form with one of the following, which would be a minute order reflecting action taken by council, and either myself or the mayor may sign a form affirming the names of the voting members. So tonight's recommendation is that council approve a minute order designating a voting delegate and up to two alternates for the 2025 League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting. There is no direct financial impacts associated with this action, and as an alternative, council may elect not to designate a voting delegate. However, this action will forfeit the city's voting ability at the on CalCity's policy. I'll now turn it back over to council.
Thank you for that, City Clerk Gonzalez. I'll bring it back to my colleagues. If anybody would like to nominate somebody for this position, Councilwoman Mejia.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Roja Zachariah.
I'll second.
Councilmember Zachariah, do you accept the nomination?
I do. I'll accept.
Thank you. I have a nomination and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. At this time, I'm looking for an alternate.
I'll nominate Councilwoman Mejia.
I'll second that.
Councilwoman Mejia, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. We have a member and an alternate for the Laiga Cities Voting Delegate. Thank you for stepping up, council members. Next item.
Under administrative reports, it's item E1, Selecting Recipient for the Proclamation Recognizing Old Timers Week.
That will be presented by our City Clerk Gonzalez again.
You guys are going to be tired of me this evening. See here.
I'll be turning 50 next year. Does that mean I could be known?
We'll have you on the, we'll keep you on the list.
Keep me on the list.
Okay. So the item E1 is selecting a recipient for the proclamation recognizing Old Timers Week. For some background, council adopted a policy in August of 2023, governing ceremonial document guidelines. On January 15th of this year, council approved the 2025 list of annual proclamations, and council also discussed and approved certain proclamations would be labeled as recipient at the discretion of council. So per council's direction, staff is requesting that council select a recipient for the proclamation recognizing Old Timers Week. And Old Timers Week, just for some background, for those who may not know, it's a week of celebration prior or prior to Saturday's Old Timers Day Parade. In the past years, the Committee for Old Timers Week, there's, I spoke with Karen, and she shared with me that they are kind of retiring from their positions for this for this group. So this may be the last week, I'm sorry, the last year will where we will recognize Old Timers Week. However, you know, council can choose for the upcoming for future meeting for future years, I should say. We could still recognize the Old Timers Parade somehow, but this is going to, looks like this is going to be the last Old Timers Week. So I'll now turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you for that report. Does anybody have any nominations? I do, I did inquire about who the king and queen are this year, and I thought they would be a great person, great couple to accept that proclamation, and that is Mr. and Mrs. Berry, unless anybody has any other nominations.
That's a motion. I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion.
I have a second.
I have a motion. Thank you. Second by Mayor Protem Rodriguez. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that.
Thank you, council. Item E2, Domestic Well Mitigation Program, DWMP. Action on this item is by the GSA, which is the Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
That will be presented by our Director of Engineering. Yay. All right. Great job.
There was never much doubt. There was doubt.
Not by me. You got this.
Anyway, again, thank you. This is the Domestic Well Mitigation Program, item E2. I just visited with council two weeks ago, and we've had a couple more meetings in the last two weeks with regard to this. The first couple of slides are generally a repeat, then they start to get different. This is just the background. The Groundwater Sustainability Plan requires groundwater sustainability agencies or GSA's attain groundwater sustainability by the year 2040. This applies to the sub-basin as a whole, rather than by GSA or GSP. The requirement was based upon staff's understanding a trade-off between immediate balance of the sub-basin versus recognition that the water table would drop for a while before GSP projects and programs resulted in stabilization. Immediate sustainability might have resulted in economic hardship within the sub-basin. The memorandum of understanding between GSA's to establish a domestic well mitigation program or DWMP was included included in the revised GSP submitted on March 21st, 2023 to the Department of Water Resources, DWR. The MOU is not a commitment. It discusses potential mitigation measures and commits GSA's to working together. I think I just went too, went too far. Since the council meeting of August 2025, 2025, there have been two meetings that staff has attended. The first on August 25th was a meeting of GSA's that was limited to the Madera Irrigation District or MID, the Madera Water District, MWD, and the City of Madera. The second meeting was August 29th, and that meeting was the GSA Coordination Work Group. We essentially, for the last few weeks, we've been seeing parallel meetings, one with work groups and some with breakouts from GSA's. Prior to the previous council meeting on August 20th, four of the GSA's met separately on August 13th as a result of possible impasse and discussions with the work group or amongst the work group. On August 25th, between MID, MWD, and the city, we had that meeting. This was discussed possible DWMP that was limited to three GSPs, just MID, MWD, and the city. The highlights of that proposal were the same basic approach as proposed with the county included in that. It was a hybrid. I call it a hybrid, a proportionate proximity. Even when we were talking about having the four GSA's that were included in our GSP, that once, once the other GSA's pulled out of the program, that essentially meant that our four GSA's were to some degree doing a prox, a proximity base just within those four GSA's, but it was still going to be proportionate among the group, or we were still talking about it being proportionate. The proposed often proposed slash offered cost sharing, pretty much the same as when we, when before MID convened this separate meeting with three GSA's. MID was offering a million dollars, MWD 200,000, the city 80,000. The county was at $5 million. As you may recall, the county expressed concerns about about this particular proposal. I think that they, over time, they became a little bit more comfortable with it, but that notwithstanding, the MID came forward and proposed a different approach with limited number of GSA's. The separate GSA discussion, at least two of the GSA's, city and MID, fill calculated splits, do not account for GSP projects. It was stated by MID that most dry wells are reported in the county GSA. Staff has reviewed this and generally confirms, generally confirms this. What I've seen, I, when I, I've received the dry well reports whenever they occur. And over the last year or so, we've had about 33, 35 dry well reports. About five of those have been within the city. The rest have been outside, and I would say the majority of those outside are not in MID or MWD, mostly within the county. There's a dry well backlog out there. I don't know exactly where that stands with regard to city, but there is a backlog. MID is supportive of the 80,000 contribution with revisiting this once a year. The 80,000 is one half of what the table I showed in the previous staff report, and I will go ahead and show that here coming. It's just a couple slides down. So it's about 1% of the total. MID believes that the GSA should probably continue contributions towards management of past, towards management past completion of the projects. In other words, when we complete our projects, management, MID is suggesting that we do need to continue that program or that commitment to it. The state is looking for a buy-in on this, and any, any GSA's that start to walk away, I don't know exactly how that would be viewed, or as a general rule, we as a group don't really know. It was agreed by the three GSA's that the group can probably structure DWMP as substantially simpler and less cost, less costly from a management standpoint. Reasonably speaking, this is probably possible regardless of the parties to the agreement. As we went through the, the plan that was attached to the last council report, that plan got to be fairly complicated, or fairly detailed, I'd say. It wasn't necessarily complicated, but it was fairly detailed. There was like 10 pages on the plan, then we had the agreement, which was another eight or 10 pages. So there was a lot there. And time continues to be the concern, being December is viewed as a point in time when we really have to be moving forward on this. The estimated costs, again, similar, $80,000 first year. Admin operating costs, the range was 14,231 to 9,500 from the calculations that were provided from our consultant. This is at 2%. At 1%, it's like 7,000 to 4,500. Given we're looking at doing this on a one-year basis, the first year, reasonably speaking, would be like $7,000. This is the table. Let's see if I can highlight that. I see my cursor moving across the screen. So here's the city at 2%. The original assumptions of cost were $142,000 for the first year, $14,000 for administrative costs, or a total of about $157,000. At present, we're looking at a total of 80 for capital costs, and, and as far as the admin operating costs, we haven't dealt and dove into that just yet. MID is looking, we're all three of the GSA's looking at this being somewhat simpler than what the, what the program was that we were looking at when we were as part of the work group. So it may drop, may drop, may go. It's going to be different. I'll, I'll just leave it at that at this point. Because that particular meeting on August 29th, cleared after staff reports for council were due, this item was published as a late distribution. The purpose of the meeting was to continue efforts on the DWMP. This is the work group. I apologize. We're, I've shifted from the breakout of three GSA's to the work group. The highlights of that meeting, it, generally speaking, I would say it changed its direction very quickly. Early in the meeting, MID indicated the intent to move towards a proximity-based approach that possibly included the city and MWD. As a result of that announcement, it was recognized that the original intent of the work group could not proceed. In other words, we were in past, and we weren't going to be going forward from that point. Probably now what we, what will be called, what we need now is what is called a framework letter, describes the basic agreement between all of the GSA's in the sub-basin. That was proposed by our mediator, that we should probably go ahead and do that. It seems to make sense that we try to get on the same page in terms of basic understanding of where we're going with wells. And the, and the dry well mitigation. I'm got, I provided a very simplistic description of what that was in the staff report. Yesterday, I received a more detailed explanation of that, and I have that included in this presentation. And with council's indulgence, I'll go through that because we are looking to go ahead and get the various GSA's to buy into that. And the first meeting that we're going to be talking about some of this is going to be next Monday. This is it. I reduced it down somewhat in size. If council doesn't mind, I'll read directly from it. I think I'm going to go ahead and start with the, with the, just the framework, starting with bullets one and two. This is, as I said, something to go ahead and get the various different GSA's on the same page. And there's, I highlighted one portion on the next page, and I'll get into it, but generally speaking, this is what's been proposed based upon six GSPs attending the last work group meeting. One of the GSA's did not attend. So first, sub-basin eligibility. Wells eligible for mitigation must be located within the legal boundaries of the sub-basin. Sub-basin boundaries are available. That's a notation from the, from the gentleman that prepared this. A sub-basin boundaries are available at whatever website and on the websites of the respective GSA's. Mitigation eligibility. Wells are eligible for mitigation, must be domestic wells or state small system wells, have lost connectivity due to declining regional water levels resulting from overdraft. No other impacts to wells will be considered as the basis for mitigation. Mitigation costs. Mitigation of a well will have a target maximum reimbursement of $30,000. Now, this is different from what we've been talking about as a group for the last month or so. We were going with 35,000 with a recognition that might have to go up year by year on the basis of the cost of, cost of living adjustment. So this says maximum. I don't expect that this will hold necessarily. Anyway, it may call, extenuating circumstances may occur that qualify well to see $30,000. Such conditions will be assessed by the given GSA or group of GSA's on an individual case basis. I, I can't imagine trying to say extenuating circumstances. From my point of view, there are no extenuating circumstances. You have a dry well, you provide a certain amount of money for it. It's consistent across property owner to property owner. Mitigation frequency. Wells found eligible will be mitigated once. Any subsequent impacts to a well potentially requiring additional mitigation will be conducted at the property owner's expense. In other words, we would be recording something against the property that says you were mitigated. There are no, there are no second chances on that. In other words, we would be recording something against the property that says you were mitigated. There are no, uh, there are no second chances on that. Uh, mitigation provider. Eligible mitigation will be provided by the respective GSA in which the well is located. Official boundaries of GSA can be found on the we's website of the respective GSA. Now, this is respective GSA. The language is going to change slightly to go ahead as a respective GSA or group of GSAs. Uh, mitigation inspection. In events of a final mitigation approval, well owner must allow a well inspection to occur. As conducted by a qualified well inspector hired by the respective available GSA. Once the inspection report is completed, the GSA will make the document available to the well owner and the GSA. Um. This one also, I don't necessarily see it staying in this particular language. Uh, this implies a fair amount of work. Uh, as a group, the, the, the city, MID and MWD, we've looked at this more of. Of the standpoint of you have a dry well, we mitigate it. The dry well must be as a result of the lowering water table. It's not, and we're not going to go ahead and uh mitigate for any other reasons. As such, if we find that the water table has dropped. They are reimbursed, the thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand or whatever. Yes.
Uh, city engineer, we have councilman Montez has a question.
Sure.
Yeah, so just reading this, and I don't know if it's a question for you Keith or a question for you Shannon. Um, and here it says a well, a dry well will be mitigated within the GSA. Basically boundary jurisdiction, right? So, city. You have a well. And it goes dry. This doesn't prohibit us from saying, hey, instead of drilling you a new well, we're just going to connect it to our system.
It does not. I've had those discussions with, with the group of GSAs. We did have an example about a month ago where we had a well outside the city. Uh, extend, bringing that well into the city was all of seventy-two feet of pipe. Plus the connection to the city's water system. Well. That was a pun. Don't intend to do puns. Um, it was somewhat, connecting to the city is somewhat less than the actual cost of drilling a well. Uh, in this particular case, it was self-help enterprises that was, that was managing, managing that. And the state has a maximum number or maximum value of reimbursing of sixty thousand dollars per well. So when people go through self-help, the magical number that the well drillers come up with is sixty thousand dollars. For anything else, the county has stated that the average well cost is about thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's sixty thousand through self-help plus management costs. So the, the cost of a dry well within uh you, you, using self-help is somewhat greater than sixty thousand. Probably on the order of eighty thousand plus dollars. Um. What that all includes, I, I haven't got into it, but. Um, that particular well, seventy-two feet of pipe. Our connection, if they connect to the city, would have been twenty-five thousand dollars or so. Uh, through self-help, much greater.
In that situation, since they're outside of the city, it wouldn't be our responsibility to mitigate that well, right?
Um.
Under this, under this, I, I understand what, you know, self-help does, right?
You're asking good questions. Uh, I, I haven't thought about it, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm right with you.
Right, so then that wouldn't even qualify for this program, but if it was in the city, say. The city boundary, you know, we annexed it or something like that.
Well, I would, I would hope that the other GSAs will go ahead and pay. Uh, make a decision to connect to the city and pay that cost or pay that amount towards that cost. Uh.
And it'd be their discretion. I mean, at that point though, we're, we're really, we could even be unaware that it's even happening, right?
Conceivably, however, we, you, council is going to be seeing a, a staff report from. Uh, the planning department that talks about well drilling policies and what uh, what the city. Policies might be for drilling wells within, say, a few hundred feet of the city. So that may play in. The city may have some say in that. We already do have some say, but it's.
Thank you.
Convoluted process.
I just wanted to make sure that we're not self-imposing that same type of kind of, I don't want to say backwards logic, but the logic right.
No, we're not self-imposing that we would pay for a well outside.
So we would, at our discretion, say the mitigation is connected to our.
Must be this way.
Okay.
We attempted to do that with self-help enterprises, but they said the money that comes from the state. Uh, they're, they've got their hands tied. It can only be used one way, and that's to drill a well.
So, but with this, I don't see anything that says that we can't make people do that. Now, there might not be.
Well, there's nothing in there right now, now, and amongst our group of, the group of GSAs included MID and MWD. We're, we're in agreement that connecting is better than drilling.
Thank you.
Sure. Um. So mitigation on, mitigation inspection, I, I see that as fairly complicated. I would hope that we find a way to simplify.
City engineer, we still have another question by council member Zachariah.
I'm sorry.
It, it just, it brought to mind, uh, is there any loophole saying where if I was annexed more in a different GSA. And got mitig- this mitigation, but now gets annexed into the city. Is there something that protects us from somebody getting it potentially twice because it's a separate GSA? Like filing once under MID and then filing once under the city because we, we annexed that property? Uh, do we need some, something like that?
I would think that, that we're looking at, well, part of this is recording the, that against the properties. I don't think. An annexation would say into the city would say that if they went dry a second time. That somebody would provide them to it.
Uh, making sure it's not protected like it's, the mitigation is specific to the GSA that it's under at that time. Like it's just in general, we're mitigating as a group.
I don't think so, but you, it's, it's an, it's an, it's an apt comment. Um. The uh, the ground rule, I'll call them ground rules for the moment. It doesn't, it doesn't anticipate that and I'm just going to go ahead and.
Just thinking, because we're expanding, I mean, there's, there could be some of those people that are, uh, he'd get smart and realize, well, like. It was a different GSA I filed under, and now I'm part of the city's GSA and I want it again, so.
Yeah.
Uh, council member, if I may.
Sure.
I've read this agreement, the first time I'm seeing it tonight, because as you know, we're in a very fluid situation during this, but there is something in number four that says. Wells found eligible will only be mitigated once. That's not limited to a GSA. That's just said you had one shot. So I think there's at least an.
That's number four actually does address it, yeah.
I'm saying like, I know right now we're talking about being a part of the, not being a part of the county, for instance. So they could, if we branched off from the county and had our three as the GSA. They got it under the county that we're still, they could still potentially get it twice, right?
If this, if this, uh, if this um framework goes forward. Number four here should take care of that.
Okay, so even though, like I said, their county is their own GSA, I get mitigation from county, now city annexes me. Uh, not part of that GSA anymore. I'm part of a different GSA.
I think if we all sign on, onto this, uh, it should be fine because wells that will be eligible.
Okay.
For mitigation only once.
One thing that we could do is we could add, wells found eligible will be mitigated once. From any, you know, from any, regardless of the source of mitigation or something like that.
Because we're potentially looking at.
Right.
Separate now from the county, if that were to go through, I don't.
Yeah, all of our neighbors are not on board, so we need to be aware of that, right?
Yeah.
So mitigated once.
Okay.
From any source.
Okay.
Regardless of the source.
Sure. And that's the sort of thing that will, I'll bring forward to the um meeting next week.
Mayor Prochir Rodriguez has a question.
Sure. Uh, thank you. I'm Eric Agos. So Keith, respect to the um, the self-help enterprise. Uh, being that they're dealing with the state, um. Although it's sixty thousand dollars to have their wells mitigated, I mean, to practically just have a new well. Why wouldn't the state see connecting to the city more of a viable um. Source, right? Because even though they provide the sixty thousand dollars for a one-way. I mean, who's to say that that doesn't go down within a period of three years or who knows when? I mean, it seems like that's happening. It's reoccurring with a lot of these wells, domestic wells, so. I mean, would the state not want to assist in this type of uh agreement here to see how. Maybe they can assist in making that connection directly to the city?
Comments I've heard is the state plans to get out of the business of mitigating wells.
Hmm.
Uh, they would be transferring that to the, the GSAs or to the, the sub-basins. Um. I don't understand why they wouldn't do the right thing and allow connection to the city, but. They apparently have their rules and. We, we, we went to, we took the effort of getting a meeting with self-help, trying to go ahead and get them to. At the very least, explain, and they basically said our hands are tied.
Well, I mean. We, we did what we could. I mean, obviously it didn't make sense, but. You've got your explanation. The state wants out of the well business and they want to put that back on our court.
Call it secondhand, because I've heard it from others who. Who have heard from others. It's, 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 I'd say it's secondhand, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's accurate. Uh, they, 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 they're looking to go ahead and have the GSAs take responsibility. If they didn't, don't take responsibility uh for. I guess virtually anything, they could go ahead and uh step in and take over and charge the. The sub-basin, the, the individual GSAs for the cost of doing that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor, if I may ask Keith, Keith a clarifying question. Um, Keith, when we were um. Discussing the item with self-help housing on the House on Story Road that was presented to the city council approximately a month ago. Um, do I recall correctly that I think staff reached out to the state? If not, I may have misspoke to a council member. Uh, because I think I, I said at the time that I, 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 I thought that staff did confirm with the state that they would only fund a new well. And not a connection.
Yeah, I, I don't recall that we ended up talking to the state.
Okay, so I apologize to the council member that I said that we spoke with the state. I'm going to eat crow here. I think we spoke with self-help. Thank you.
We, we probably, we prob- somebody may have, but I don't, I don't recall us doing it. I apologize for not doing that.
Thank you for your questions.
And then public disclosure. Uh, again, this is assuming we'll fill these blanks and. Uh, the GSAs will convene a joint public meeting to discuss annual mitigation conditions. Uh, present, present an annual summary to the public and solicit public input. No less than two weeks before this meeting, the GSAs will jointly complete a domestic well mitigation program annual report. And will publish this report on their respective websites. Um, I don't have any concerns with this myself. Public outreach, the GSAs and sub-basin agree to coordinate, to coordinate. And consist, to coordinate and consistent public outreach regarding domestic well mitigation in the sub-basin. Now, I would imagine that that coordination is going to occur as part of the work group. Uh, the work group is mandated to go ahead and have public meetings at least once a year. So this will end up being part of that. Um, now, let's see, let's. I have the sense that I want to go ahead and talk about one other thing, and it will, I think it will come to me. Now, council consideration for tonight is, should sta- should council through staff work with MID to implement? And participate in DWB, DWMP based on information received today. Uh, and or should council through staff work with the county to first explore or be open to an alternative to DWM pre. DM, DWMP preparation with MID and MWD. Now. At the work group meeting last Friday, um. The county accepted this and didn't really talk about it much. Uh, they just accepted it and we moved on to the next item, which was the framework document that we just looked at. Um. I, based on the meeting with the MID and the, and. Madera Water District, MWD. I believe that that is probably the, the city's um. Most logical choice. The county doesn't. Yeah. They, they seem to have different impression of how they want to go. Uh, if it becomes the city and say the county, I'm not sure where we will be in terms of participation. Um, given all the water wells are. The assertion that most of the dry wells are in the county. Um, but I'm perfectly happy getting with the county. I was intending to do that today, but today turned out to be a little, a tad busy. Um, so that's the uh, uh, part of that. And then the recommended action would be work with MID impression, preparation of DWMP. Um, that's toward, that to some degree is contrary to the council's consideration, but. Staff can work to go ahead, go ahead and get an answer for, for both of those. What we, you know, from M, MID standpoint. They're keeping it simple, I think. They're moving forward and they're gonna, and they'll have a process and will agree to it or not agree to it. Uh, the county uh seems to be a bit more. Convoluted. I've heard, I've heard. I apologize, I lowered it on. Um, it, it, it appears to be a little bit more convoluted. When they uh, when they do, I, I heard some discussion about. Um, what the, what the uh. Assessment, the, the people who have been assessed within the county, what they. Um, what they might think about the program if it changed any as a result of MID pulling out. There was some concern about that. I don't, I, I don't have confidence that they're going to be able to go ahead and tie this down quickly. But I know they're going to try.
Question, Mayor Prochir Rodriguez.
Um, thank you, Mayor Agos. Not so much a question, but uh Keith, you're presenting considerations and then you're requesting that we. Or recommending that we take a certain action. So, but you haven't spoken to the county yet, so would it be.
I have not.
Should it be prudent for us to just explore that first and make sure that, you know, we've unturned every rock we could? And if that doesn't work out, then we can proceed with the, with the plan that's recommended?
It, it is possible. What I, what I, I probably should have phrased that better. Uh, what I, what I think would be, the approach would be that we continue to work with MW, with MID. And then work with MI, with the county towards trying to get to an understanding where we'll be. I, we as the city are. Kind of small change relative to the overall mitigation. When I've talked to the county, I, I, or excuse me, MID. Um, I asked them, you are prepared to go ahead and accept the dry wells that are in the city? They said yes. Um, I. To some degree was um. A little bit surprised by that, but they, they, they see the city as a partner. And they would, you know, and they want, then, then they want to work with the city. You know, equally, the, the city could probably be in uh the county or it could be in MID. The MID uh boundaries extend through the city because they have the pipe going through it. And other areas that can be irrigated. So we, to some degree, have our uh feet in both worlds with regard to GSAs. But I would, I would suggest that we, we work with MID. I, you know. I, and then, and then I ask the county, can you do what we would like to see, which was. The one percent review on an annual basis. And uh, and then we can conceivably pull out after one year. With the exception of the possible maintenance, uh, the admin and all that. I don't see us, I don't think it's reasonable at this point in time to say that we. That we say we're going to pull out of the administrative part of it.
Yeah, well, I mean, it seems like you have good partners that are wanting to move forward and you have some resistance on, on other ends, but. Um, I think we perceive with that partnership that we've established so far and that, that's in agreement with the uh. Domestic well mitigation plan and, you know, just. Continue to probe at the county to see if they're willing to take on the um, the proposals that we have before them.
Will do.
And if not, then let's move on. I mean, because we still have to prepare some type of mitigation plan. I mean, at least at our end, the state knows that, hey, we're doing our part. And here's how we came up with the um logistics and or the, the financials of how we're going to mitigate that. And I mean, we, we have sound um rationale behind what we're doing, right? Now, the other GSAs don't want to partake in this, then they have, they have to, they have to bring that. Before the state and, and show why they have not participated in this domestic well mitigation.
Well, I think they're all participating. It's uh, there, three of them are going to form their own uh DWMP. And for a while, it was going to be four GSAs formed into one. And for a while, it was going to be four GSAs formed into one, you know, the, the, the three that we're talking about tonight along with the county. So now we essentially have, that would be five separate D W M Ps. And it's hard cry from what we hoped for.
I, I think you brought up one, I'm not sure if it was the one that has just one owner. I mean, I can see why they want to go on their own. But for the most part, I think
Sure. Well, two of them, two of them, Newstone and Gravely Ford, they show that they have 0%.
There you go.
So. So it's probably no surprise that they wanted to break out. Root Creek wanted to break out. They feel like they're well funded to go ahead and handle the, to handle that. They probably believe they have less dry wells within their jurisdiction or than, than the 7% would indicate that they're going to pay. I, I don't, I don't know their logic. They, they, I just know what the means they've expressed, the the confidence that they can do it on their own and they want to.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's what I recommend. I think you had proposed a similar recommendation. So I think
Work with both.
Yeah.
Yes. We'll continue talking to M I D. Then the other item, which I don't think I included correctly, is, is council. Does council accept this particular framework as proposed?
We have a few more questions. Councilmember Zachariah.
Sorry, Keith. And it may be a legal question for Shannon. So let's imagine we go forward minus the county, we prepare everything. Do they still have an 11th hour option to come in and join? And does that give us, I guess, more strength in that negotiation to kind of show we've already formed? And if you want to agree to come on board, we're going to be at that 1%? Do you feel?
I don't know if it gives, I feel like we, I, I feel like we're kind of in between right now. I, to some degree, I feel fortunate if we're able to go ahead and solidify, solidify one or the other with, with the guidelines that we've set for ourselves. For instance, the 1% or the $80,000. The ability to go ahead and review it once a year rather than a five-year basis. I'll feel fairly good there. I, 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 I think it's a good idea to go ahead and keep talking to both of them. They're both open to discussions. Just keep working with them. I'm concerned about the, you know, we're not, fortunately, we're not going to be annexing to the north, some of the areas that have the dry wells, but we're seeing dry wells popping up on the north side of the city. We have, we have four or five just outside the city borders. But a lot of them I see are out in the ranchos and the other areas well east of the city. So I'm not sure what the county will be thinking about that. I, I, I don't think that the, that the city is responsible for any of those dry wells.
The sport you're looking for is the, is the recommendation to show that we're, we're in agreeance with the other two agencies at this point because that's, that's the better plan instead of holding off for the possibility of the county. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
So your, your, your recommendation is to move, move forward with the acceptance of the three instead of the four at this point?
I think we move forward with M I D and M W D, talking with them in a concerted manner and then keep, keep the door open to the county and discuss it with them. I, I don't, I don't know that there's any sweet spot in there. I, I feel pretty good about what M I D has said, but it doesn't mean that they are, you know, that, 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 that their board might change it on them as well.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, I was just curious, are we? Excuse me, I'm so sorry. So you're going to go back to the drawing board basically and continue with the county as well as the other two components? Or are we going to just move forward and then pray that the county?
Well, I
Their mind.
They're not going, you know, they're not going to change their mind. I'm pretty sure. I think, I think that M I D has effectively set them to the side. So now they've asked us to join that particular group. They may change their mind, but somehow I think that we're on two different pages with regard to the county or at least M I D is on two different pages. They want the same thing that we do in, in a couple ways. We want credit for our projects. You know, I told you 100, no more than 125 meters left to be done at the last meeting. You know, I'm hearing that we're closer to 50 meters. I, I the, depending upon how you, you know, you do the search on the system, it, it can change, but right now we're doing the search on the system based upon flat rates. Steve from our office went out and looked at the various locations that said that they needed to be metered and he was finding meter after meter after meter that was on flat rate. So we think we may be down to as little as 50 meters that, that need to be installed. So we want credit for our being done. Which would mean that we pull, substantially pull out within about a year or so. We want whoever we partner with, we want them to recognize that. And I, I think that, I think
Yeah, well, credit where credit is due.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that the county will, you know, will, I think that they'll recognize that, but there seems to be a slight difference there that I haven't been able to go ahead and reconcile.
Push him over.
Thank you for your comment. We have another one. Councilmember Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Keith. Can you please go to item number three? I forgot the name of what it was. For the mitigation costs, I think that it would be helpful if the part about individual case basis of if those, if that criteria was spelled out and clear because a lot of times, a lot of this is just English focused. So that's the first barrier. But even after that, even when it's translated to other languages, it's a little bit harder to get through the jargon and, and all of that. So I think it would be helpful for the public and it would be more accessible to them to know exactly what it is, like when, when can you exceed that and how that, that's determined, what, what is all the criteria for that?
If we do have extenuating circumstances, define that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So at this time, we have, oh.
I was just gonna add on to, to Shannon's point, Mayor, sorry, regarding this the letter here, item four, I think you were going to add some comments on that too, right? Just to right, okay, so. Because that was going to be your request next is how you felt about the letter. And I think they've already addressed.
Yeah, we, as a group, we, we talked about recording against the property and I'm surprised it doesn't say record against the property.
Through the mayor. And just so I'm clear, Keith, tonight is just basically a recommendation and concept so that we can get back quickly to the other partners that we may be doing this with. This is not a final approval?
No, this is not a final and it's concepts. We have a meeting on Monday. We'll talk about it, whether there was any concerns from any of the GSAs. And then we have another meeting two weeks from, from Monday to go ahead and get into more detail.
Hey, Councilmember Montez.
So can I make a motion that we approve the framework with the, to edit suggestions and move forward with M I D and then W D, leaving the door open for the county to come whenever they want to, but move forward with M I D and M W D so that we get this done, right? Because we are running up against a deadline. I'd rather have it sorted out. It doesn't sound like the, the question for us at least, I mean, it's like, what, $76,000? I mean, it's not nothing. But I mean, that's the potential. It goes back up to 156 versus 80. I think we, we realize it's cost savings now. And then we have everything done. So the state can't come back and say, hey, you're not playing well with everybody else. And we're going to review this in a year anyway. So at that point, I'm sure we'll have these conversations all over again. So that would be my motion.
So I have a motion?
Councilmember Montez, sorry, can I clarify your motion? So when you say approve the framework, you mean approve the framework in concept with the items that were addressed, including no double dipping on the mitigation and including the clarification of the extenuating circumstances? And I can't remember if there was one more out there. Those are the two listed.
That we're recommending they work with M I D.
Oh, yes. Okay.
But that's enough. The language, there's three. So the mitigation cost language, the mitigation frequency, and then the recording on title.
Recording, that was the third one. And continue to work with M I D and our partners.
Yes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second, all those, oh, before I do that, I need to open up for public comment. Anybody in the chamber? Anybody online or on Zoom? City Clerk Gonzalez?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, at this time I close public comment. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion passes with direction for our city engineer.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item.
Item F is council member reports, announcements and future agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events to request updates to initiate future agenda items and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action.
Thank you. With that, I will go over here to councilmember Montez. Anything to report?
I just want to say thank you to all staff, but I did want to do, give a shout out to our city manager, especially with a member of the public or the community recognizing a lot of the efforts we did get to go to specifically the airport to kind of check out what was going on. And I, I know he doesn't like to take credit and it is, you know, he's directing staff to do things, but you know, a lot of his, a lot of the, the positive things that people see and comment on are because of the vision that he has and, you know, the, the steps that he's taken. So I just want to say we all, I think we all see that, but the public also sees that. So thank you for everything that you do, city manager. And that's it for me.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Zachariah.
Uh, just an invitation to guys, I'll be having a drone rodeo booth out there at the fair. So if you want to try your skills at flying a little drone around, I'll invite you a drone, a racing drone. Yeah, yeah, so. You're up for it.
Thank you for that comment. Councilmember Evans.
Nothing to repeat.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to second the kudos to our city manager, Ronaldo. Thank you for all you do. I want to say thank you to New American Leaders who invited me to a mixer with youth who are all around the Central Valley being involved in their communities and thinking about the future of representing our communities and investing and advocating for the Central Valley in Sacramento. So I really appreciated that opportunity to be there and that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor Procham Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mary Gallegos. Today we had the opportunity alongside some of the council, our city manager to be at the Cotton Wood Creek Bridge project that showcased a successful allocation of federal and state funds to address the aging infrastructure that's there. That Cotton Wood Creek project now sets the stage for the six lane project that is from Avenue 12 to Avenue 7. We hope to see that coming up here in mid 2026. But that again will open up the additional lane to alleviate congestion, movement of goods, and more importantly, the safety of our commuters and or folks that come in and out of the corridor there. But anyhow, that was great to see all of you there. Lastly, I'd like to see if we can probably set a recognition for some of the Fourth of July. I wanted to do this last time around, but I do want to make sure that we also give them a recognition for their contributions to that event. It's, it's not a very easy event, heavy lift on, on not only the, the folks here, but I know councilmember Zachariah does a lot of that heavy lifting there. And it, it does require a lot of funding. So I wanted to recognize those that have contributed the year over year. So if this council would agree to that, I'd like to bring them here, maybe give them a certificate of recognition. So.
Okay, I see five. Thumbs up. Thank you.
And with that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Viegas, any comments?
Well, I'm just going to repeat what Mr. Rodriguez said. We all attend to the, you know, racing ribbon cutting of the nail breach, cut wood, breach. So that was a good event. That was it. That's it.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And then just a couple of comments from myself. We've had quite a few water breaks happening in the city. So thank our teams for being out there and taking care of that. The last one is Madera District Fair is happening Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So get yourself a frozen banana corn dog and enjoy that free entertainment that we have at the fair. And with that, I will turn it over to my city attorney for closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three items for closed session this evening. Item G1 is conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation citing whether to initiate litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.94, one case. Item G2 is public employee and performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 5495 7B1, title city clerk. Item G3 is conference of labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 5495 7.6. Agency designated representative is Mayor C.C. Gallegos, title city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time I open it up for public comment. I see none in the house. City Clerk Gonzalez, anything online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, thank you for joining us. We will take a break and go into closed session.
You're silly.
You gotta go to work.
You gotta go to work.
You go self for the fairness.
Oh, there was agenda we very like.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Welcome back everyone. We're coming out of closed session and I will turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one reportable item, item G2. The city clerk received an evaluation of satisfactory or above. Thank you.
Thank you for that. At this time I adjourn our meeting. Make a correction. We had Councilwoman Mejia leave closed session at 7:42 tonight and with that I will adjourn the meeting and see you back Wednesday, September 17, 2025. Thank you everyone.